I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. It is 6:00 PM. If you would, stand with me. Mr. Kidd is going to lead us in the invocation and Mrs. Powell in the pledges. If you'd like, please bow your heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for your love. Thank you for your grace. Dear Lord, at this time of year with so many activities, end of year, tests, prom, Lord, we just ask for your protection around our students and just continued protection. Just wrap your arms around them. Your Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve your children. Help us have a productive meeting tonight. Help us just glorify you. We know you've got all the details worked out, Lord, just to help us follow your plan for, Lord, for this school district. You God, we ask that you be with the teachers, the students, the, all of the workers, the policemen we have, everyone that serves, Lord. We just ask for your protection and your blessing and just help us have a good evening in your name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 And thank you, Mr. Kidd and Mrs. Powell. That, Item 2A, Special District Recognition from NAM. Dr. Stockton?
At this time, I'll invite our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Chris Hines, up to make the announcement.
Thank you. Good evening, President Husbands, members of the school board. Dr. Stockton, this evening, I'm pleased to share with you that the Conroe Independent School District has, for the fourth consecutive year, been recognized by the National Association of Music Merchants, or NAM, as a recipient of the Best Communities for Music Education Award. The NAM Foundation is a nonprofit organization committed to the advancing of music education. And since 1999, the organization has conducted a survey to recognize communities who provide access to music education as an essential part of a complete education. The survey measures a variety of factors, including the budgetary commitment to music, the opportunities to learn music, the presence of highly qualified music teachers, adherence to state and national standards, and the types of musical experiences offered, as well as opportunities for performance and competition. Being selected to receive one of the Best Communities for Music Awards acknowledges the ongoing commitment to excellence made by our Board of Trustees to support the performing arts, as well as the outstanding work done by our district's 42 elementary music teachers, 60 band teachers, 27 orchestra teachers, and 27 choir teachers in our Fine Arts Department. And so, we are tonight to be recognized for receiving that award for the fourth time in a row. Thank you.
So, this is the plaque I guess they gave us?
I'm going to get Bob Ward to come over with me. One of our music, one of our music teachers is with us tonight, and so we'll have, are there any of the music teachers in the house? Yeah, it was Pat Ferris. Will come on up.
So, I think this is really awesome. My daughter loves to sing and is learning to play piano, and to have her music teacher be so dedicated and to know that the district supports it is just a wonderful thing. So, I'm honored that y'all do such a fine job raising up these students. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want to get a picture? Oh, we'll get a picture.
Thank y'all again for your hard work and great results.
Appreciate it, sir.
Item 2B, Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for citizen participation? Very good. The next 30 minutes have been designated for public participation by patrons who have signed up to address the board in accordance with Board Policy BED. Please remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. The board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. These policies provide that if a resolution cannot be reached administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the board as properly posted in the agenda item. Copies of the district's complaint policies can be found on the district's website. Those who have registered to address the board will be limited to five minutes for their presentation. Delegations of five or more must appoint one representative to rep, to present their views to the board. Mrs. Ferris, would you please call the first person who's signed up to address the board?
Gregory Steinbach.
Good evening, Dr. Stockton, members of the Board of Trustees. My name's Greg Steinbach. I'm here today to share briefly with you, the board, an overview that occurred in my last meeting before resigning from my position at College Park last April. I had worked in the district for over nine years with proficient or exemplary P-Dos ratings, conducted many district-level workshops for staff in different areas, from mathematics to nonviolent crisis intervention, as well as presentations to parents and more. However, I'm not presenting tonight around the issue of my recommendation last April for nonrenewal. I am here to present to you what occurred during my final meeting with Dr. Sharples and Dr. Merle. During the meeting, I was instructed to not communicate in any manner with all CISD staff, College Park parents, and College Park students. The student part, I agree with as well, as not communicating with staff and such during the investigation part of the nonrenewal process. However, it was told to me very clearly that even if my doctor, therapist, or members of my church were College Park parents, that they were included in the directive of no communication in any manner, in any way. It was even said that if my primary care doctor was a CP parent, quote, "Guess you should change doctors then." And if I needed services, the response was, "You can always go the United Way." I was to ignore everyone who tried to speak or contact me. The administrative directive was tantamount to a restraining order with the exception of a distance requirement. I was hindered from speaking to thousands of people in Montgomery County without the consequence of being reprimanded further and violating my settlement agreement for resignation. When I asked, "What should I do about a colleague who left me a message that she was going to call the sheriff's office to do a welfare check on me?", I shared with Dr. Sharples that I texted her saying, "Back on administrative leave, cannot discuss or communicate with CISD staff or students." I was then immediately informed, quote, "Oh, so you have already violated the directive." And later, my attorney confirmed that I was facing another disciplinary action for that specific communication. The meeting ended when Dr. Sharples, after a long silent pause while my head was inside spinning rapidly, stated, "Or you can resign and you can talk to anyone you want. But as long as you are under contract, we can tell you who you can communicate with." There was then a long pause as again I tried to collect my thoughts. I turned to her and said, "Oh, that's the angle." Her response was, quote, "There is no angle here." At that point, I knew something bigger was going on because my offense was not that great. And I stood up, apologized to Dr. Merle for my having created the original situation and left the office. I believe that these things are all violations of the Code of Educators, Standard 1.1, 1.7, 2.3, 2.4, which is about citizens' rights of employees, and Standard 2.6, which is about coercive treatment of employees, District Code DG, which addresses my First Amendment rights, and foremost, my First Amendment rights as explained in multiple legal briefs from Garcetti and Sebellos, which was a Supreme Court case of 2006, of which you have copies of some briefs. And I potentially believe that there are also labor, medical benefits, and possibly HIPAA violations by suggesting that I have to go the United Way for services and that I should change my primary care physician. This situation and how I was treated was atrocious. And it made me wonder, was I singled out? Was this a unique situation? If so, why? Who did I upset so much to be treated this way? Or is this common practice? If so, that is outlandish and completely unacceptable as a professional in this community and as a taxpayer. All that needed to be said at that meeting was that I had to, one, not contact any CP students. That makes sense. Don't poison the kids before graduation. No school or student-related discussions with CP parents. That makes sense, too. Don't poison the tree. And that I was not to discuss the situation or the settlement in any way, shape, or form with anyone except my attorney until my contract was over. That was the appropriate response. It would have been clear and reasonable. But instead, for two months, I was constantly concerned about who I would run into in public and how I was to ignore them. It was awful, stressful, and isolating. I have many ideas to help the students in our community to excel and flourish, but I regret mostly that my ability to work with CISD directly is now limited.
Mr. Steinbach, you've reached your five minutes, sir. Would you, could you wrap it up in a matter of seconds, please?
Yes, real quick. I believe all means all, but it's not happening. After much prayer and reflection, I came to the conclusion that no governmental employee should be allowed to violate my First Amendment rights, and it needed to be exposed. I ask the board, Dr. Stockton, and the other district leaders, who I do trust, to know that staff treatment has often suffered and become ugly and very political, which to me means that someone's ego or own gain is more important than our students and our children's success. I will and want and will continue to pursue, in our community, that this be a safe and caring environment for all citizens to have their rights protected, and I ask, as you, my elected representatives, I expect the same from you.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless.
Christopher Marshall.
Hi, my name's Christopher Marshall, and I appreciate your time. I'm here to just sort of talk about some of the graduation requirements for our students. I have a daughter who goes to a Conroe ISD school. She, and this is specific to science, she has taken all of her science credits. She's a junior. She has essentially completed the requirements for science for the state, but is being told she has to take another science her senior year, which will be over and above what is necessary for her to graduate by, by the state, you know, expectations. So, my son went through this last year where he did the same thing in hoping that finishing science his junior year, he would have more time to devote to JROTC, which is my daughter's thought as well, they're both on staff. And so, the idea is that they didn't want to take that science their senior year. They're being told, this was last year, my son was told he didn't have a choice, he had to take the science. It was just the policy that you took four years of consecutive science in Conroe ISD. And so, we said, "Well, that's the policy, that's what you're going to have to do, you're just going to have to suck up and do it," right? And so, he did. And he, he's taken extra science this year. However, we got a notice that the high school sends out at the end of the year, all the classes that your student has to pass in order to graduate this year. So, it shows all of basically his core classes, and he has to pass all of his English, he has to pass his, all of that, but science, he does not have to pass. So, he was required to take a class that he did not have to pass. And now, my daughter is being told this again this year, and I have, I talked to him last year about it, I'm talking to him about it again this year, but I'm being told again because that's the way we do it. I'm not trying to be confrontational or anything like that, especially when I mention this part, you know, I contacted TEA, asked them about sort of what the regulations were on this. A school district does have the opportunity to increase the rigor and require extra classes. However, those classes have to be sort of aligned to a program, or they, they can't be generic, like you have to take another science class. It has to be specific, it has to be, you have to take Computer Tech 1. It can't be, you have to take a computer applications course or something like that. And so, I worry that, one, we're not in alignment with, with the Texas Education Code, for one thing. We've got kids who are having to, excuse me, take more classes than they should have to. My son is planning on majoring in history, wants to get his doctorates in history. He was hoping to be able to maybe take more history classes that senior year, or at least be able to devote himself to other time and other things. He was not able to do that. So, I'm trying to figure out what to do about my daughter right now and sort of what our next step is, because I don't feel like she should have to take a class that is not required to graduate, but because Conroe ISD says it is, she must take it. And also, that kind of goes against the Texas Education Code. So, that's basically what I wanted to say. I'm trying to follow up at the school. I'm waiting for emails back right now, but I'm sort of getting the same line that I got last year. So, that's about all I got to say.
We'll have someone follow up with you on that.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Item 3, this is the consent agenda. Had this for a number of days. Does anybody have a desire to remove something from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I would call for a vote.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Thank you.
Go ahead. A second.
Very good. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. You. Item 4A, Curriculum and Instruction, Instructional Material Allotment and Teaks Certification. Dr. Stockton?
Dr. Hines, if you'll present that item, please.
Good evening again, President Husbands, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Stockton. Tonight, I respectfully request your approval of the Instructional Materials Allotment and Teak Certification for the 2015-2016 school year. The Texas Education Agency annually requires that we certify that all of our students have access to instructional materials that cover all of the teaks in each of the required subjects. The certification is a prerequisite to submitting our order for next year's materials through the state's electronic ordering system. And if you recall, last month, we approved the selection of the high school math, the K-12 social studies, and the floral design and fine arts materials as part of the most recent proclamation. And last school year, we adopted the new science in K-8 math materials. In addition to ordering any newly adopted materials, we annually order the materials necessary to meet the growth in enrollment. We renew subscriptions and licenses that we use. We also annually replace consumable materials and replace any lost or damaged books and materials. Since 2011, as you know, the state no longer buys the materials, instead, the district receives an annual allotment, which is used to order the instructional materials, the textbooks, as well as the resources and the technology that we use to, for those materials. And so, tonight, we ask your approval so we can start ordering.
I have a motion. Let's go, move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Like, sign up. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Hines. Item 5A, Award RFP 150104, CISD Website Design and Development.
I'll ask Sarah Wood, our Director of Communications, to come to the podium and communicate with us.
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. We come to you tonight seeking your approval on the selection of the vendor Modern Tribe for the design and development of a new Conroe ISD website. The new Conroe ISD website will offer enhanced online security provided through an off-site host. A new website design will also provide the district with a refreshed online presence in addition to the ability to share news and events more efficiently. Visitors to the district and campus websites will benefit from a cohesive design and consistent structure as they navigate through the pages. This is the culmination of a process that began back in the fall with much research and most collaboration among our district-level departments and campus and district-focused groups, as well as a purchasing department, and then, of course, our technology department, and Terry McClarity and his team. And I'd like to extend special recognition to Michael Pellon for the sharing of his expertise in this process. He's actually here tonight. If you'd like to stand and wait.
Thank you.
So, with that, I ask your approval on this item.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second. And a second. Any discussion, questions? I just have one, a new refresh image, you know, so on and so forth. Have you had the luxury of seeing that, or is it in development stage, or is it just conceptual? I mean, help me, I mean...
It's just conceptual at this point. We created a spec sheet, you know, telling people what we were looking for, and so, you know, pending your approval, then we'll be again to meet with the designers.
So, basically, they showed you what they had done.
Yes, yes, sir.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 5B, RFQ 150204 for school buses. Dr. Stockton?
Mr. Cox, if you'll come to the podium, please.
President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, I recommend the Board of Trustees Award RFQ Number 150204, School Buses, to the following vendors for an expenditure of $2,613,725, and authorize the superintendent to execute any documents necessary to complete this transaction. The recommended vendors are Rush Bus Centers and Thomas Bus Gulf Coast GP, Inc. Funds are provided in the Capital Projects Fund and the IDEA-B Fund. CISD will be purchasing 20 77-passenger school buses, 553-passenger diesel new-built buses with wheelchair lifts, and 353-passenger stock buses with wheelchair lifts. These buses will be used for replacements and for growth. Proposals and recommendations are, were evaluated by members of the Transportation Department and reviewed by the Purchasing Department. I recommend that you approve this RFP.
I hear a motion.
So moved.
You, and a second. Any discussion, questions for Cox?
I have a question. What's our makeup, our fleet makeup, as far as few, what few deserve the primary, what's the few makeup?
Well, the, we, the vast majority, we have one propane tank in Conroe, and in the other centers, it's diesel and gasoline. We don't have any gasoline buses, I don't believe anymore. But we've, the last two or three purchases have been propane buses, so we need to purchase diesel buses now to service the other transportation centers.
Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. Item 5C, Select Construction Manager at Risk for the New High School in Oak Ridge Feeder Zone. Dr. Stockton?
I'll ask Mr. Foster to come up, actually, for the next four items.
Very good.
Five items.
President, President Husbands, Dr. Stockton, members of the board, it's my pleasure to ask for your approval in the selection of the Construction Manager at Risk for the new high school in the Oak Ridge Feeder Zone. This is also asking for the approval for Dr. Stockton at Superintendent Schools to negotiate and execute the Construction Manager at Risk agreement. In February this year, the board selected Construction Manager at Risk as a delivery method for this and other projects within the district. For this project, we utilized a two-step process as allowed by the Texas Government Code, and step one was to advertise and to receive qualifications from contractors. Four companies responded, Valforbady Construction, Brookstone Construction Managers, Gilbane Building Company, and Durtec Incorporated. All four companies were found to be qualified and were asked to participate in step two, which is to deliver pricing proposals and participate in interviews. The selection committee graded each contractor, and the final ranking is based on the grading criteria that was published as part of this request for proposals and request for qualifications. The grading, the final grading of this process is attached in your, in your board booklet. And Durtec Inc. was selected as the offerer who submitted the proposal determined to be the best value for the district. At this time, I ask for your approval for this selection.
I hear a motion.
Mr. President, I move we approve.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, question?
I have a comment. I read through the selection criteria. I thought it was very detailed. I thought it was also very objective, and I liked the fact that everybody had access to it, so it seemed very clear to me. So, I really appreciated that, and it was nice to be able to see all of that detail. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would also brag on our administration having participated in that process. Being an outsider, not, 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 not on, on, on the administrative staff, I, I commend y'all for your efforts and your, and your commitment of time, Dr. Noel, Dr. Hines, Mr. Foster. It was impressive, Mr. Powell was involved in so on and so forth, but it was an impressive process. I learned a lot, and I thank you for your diligent effort as well. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much. Item D, Mr. Foster, Dr. Stockton, both?
Again, at this time, I request your approval and the author, your approval and the selection of the Construction Manager at Risk for a project titled The Woodlands High School Locker Room Additions. This also comes with the request to approve the authorization of Superintendent Dr. Don Stockton to negotiate and execute the CM at Risk agreement. This selection followed the same process described before for the, the previous project. Step one had five companies respond, Valforbady Construction, Brookstone Construction Managers, Sterling Structures Incorporated, and Durtec Inc. and GTT Construction. All respondents were found to be qualified and asked to participate in step two for the receipt of pricing proposals and to participate in the interview process. The selection committee graded each contractor on, based on the published grading criteria, and the rankings are attached in your board package. Valforbady Construction was selected as the offerer who submitted the proposal determined to be the best value for the district. At this time, I ask for your approval of this selection.
I hear a motion.
So moved.
You, and a second?
My second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much. Item E, Mr. Foster?
At this time, I request your approval in the selection of the Construction Manager at Risk for the Track and Tennis Court Lifecycle Renovations Project. Also, we request the authorization for Superintendent Dr. Don Stockton to negotiate and execute the CM at Risk agreement. This selection, like the others, followed the same process as described before. Step one had three companies respond, Hellas Construction, Brookstone Construction Managers, and GTT, Inc. All three companies were found to be qualified and asked to participate in step two for the receipt of pricing and participate in the interviews. The selection committee graded each contractor on the published grading criteria. That ranking is included as part of this board item, or the, the final ranking is included as part of this board item. Brookstone was selected as the offerer who submitted the proposal determined to be the best value for the district. At this time, I request your approval for this selection.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And thank you very much. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Like, sign, opposed? And Item F, Foster?
This action item is considered the selection of IBI Group Architects for a district NOC, which is Network Operations Center, Data Center Design Services, and to delegate Dr. Don Stockton as the Superintendent of Schools to negotiate and execute an owner-architect agreement. This project is intended to engage design and planning services to develop a long-range data center plan intended to accommodate current needs and allow for structured expansion as future technology needs grow within the district. We're looking to IBI Group Architects to help us plan and navigate this process. At this time, we ask for your approval to assign IBI to this project. At this time, we ask for your approval to assign IBI to this project.
Mr. President, I still move the approval.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
I just have a couple of questions. I know this is just designed, so they will look at the current facility we have and determine if it's adequate, or if it can be expanded, or are we talking about maybe even needing to move it outside of this area? I mean, do we have an idea? I'm just asking. I may, I may be way ahead of that.
We know we need some larger space.
Yes, yes. And I agree with all of that.
I don't think it'll move out of this building.
Okay, all right.
But we're looking at where the best place within this building would be.
That is correct. Would it also take into account power and energy needs and...
Yes.
The kind of...
Absolutely, that is correct. I mean, this building has, when it comes to power, is, the, the main switchgear is the original switchgear to the building, so there are some upgrades that are necessary as, as part of this project in order to support a, what we're looking at is a, we're attempting to look at this as a twenty-year growth plan. So we're looking at something twenty years from now, and imagine what we will look like and accommodate that for, so we can be planned for the structured expansion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foster.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And item G, Mr. Foster?
At this time, I'd like to give you an update on the capital improvement projects we have underway within the, within the district. Starting with the Oak Ridge High School ninth-grade campus, I'd like to report this, this project is on schedule. We're looking at the, the new front entry of that building, the new curb appeal, that building this project brought to the ninth-grade campus. The campus admin has taken over use of the, of this portion of the building as we described last month. This is a, a picture of the inside of the cafeteria expansion, which is very near its completion. We anticipate turning it over to the campus for its use as part of the next phase of turnover, but it will happen in the very, very near future. The meat and potatoes of this project is a classroom expansion for what we're looking at here is the inside of the expanded part of the library for that campus. As you can see, the interior walls and interior systems are, are coming together. The other classroom areas are, are progressing, just as we would imagine they would at this point, as you can see, the areas are being, becoming more and more defined every day. Where this project is suffering a little bit is because of the weather we received. I mean, it's been a wonderful wet, wet springtime. It is holding up production on the outside of the building, but we are very near that dry condition we need to be. The inside of the building is actually proceeding ahead of schedule. The outside of the building is lagging a little bit behind, but it's still well within the, the target period of complete, so the students have access to the entire building for school next year.
It is always.
Yes. At Oak Ridge Elementary, this, this project is making progress as we had intended. What you're looking at are the roofing going on to the, the additions for the mechanical room spaces that house the new mechanical equipment for this, this project. There are two mechanical rooms. This is the other. The one will be on the south end of campus. This will be on the north end, adjacent to the gymnasium. Just another look at the exterior of those as they're, as they're coming together. The goal here is to get this project completely dry so that we're ready to install the equipment as soon as, as soon as the kids are released for, for summer break. During the, during the summer breaks, when the project gets really intense, is that's when we make it into each of the classrooms and do the, the overhaul of the individual area, the system, the ductwork system within the building. That project is on schedule and scheduled to be complete for school next year. And that is our capital improvement.
Yeah. Very, very nice job.
Thank you.
Item six A, consider bus driver pay increase.
At this time, I invite Dan Cox up to present that item.
President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, I'm pleased to present tonight and recommend to the Board of Trustees, approve a $1 per hour pay increase for all bus drivers beginning with the May first paycheck. Conroe ISD, like many school districts in the Houston region and across the state, has experienced critical shortages in school bus drivers throughout the 2014-2015 school year. Analysis by Tasby Compensation Group has determined that the market for CDL bus drivers has increased. In an effort to maintain a competitive salary structure, attract new drivers, and retain for, for the vacant positions, and retain existing bus drivers, Tasby has recommended an immediate $1 per hour increase for all existing bus drivers and a new pay range for bus drivers. The starting pay for new bus drivers will increase to $14.50 per hour. These changes will be effective beginning with the May first paycheck. I recommend that you approve this.
Mr. President, I move we approve the pay increase as presented.
Second, Bill.
Any discussion, questions?
Cox, I just have one. This is no, my only concern with this is not the, the dollar. It's that Tasby made the same recommendation to all the people who are competing for bus drivers. And I, I'm just saying, do you know, is this going to secure our position? Let's not say put us ahead, because that's, that's a...
I believe that this is a very good recommendation, and I believe that we'll find ourselves in a good position. The, in addition, we are making the change effective immediately, and then we are going to add an additional, a normal increase for next year as well.
So it doesn't affect that.
So, so I think we're, this change will put us in a competitive position. The additional increase will keep us there.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other questions, comments?
After the vote, I have a question, just a related issue.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead and get it out?
Well, here's my question. I think this is, I think it's great, and I'm, I'm in favor of this. I just had a, a unrelated issue that I just came up, is when, when one of our teachers, say like a band personnel or a coach drives a school bus, and they have to encourage them out of pocket, I guess, to get their CDL, and, and do they get any kind of additional pay for that? I was just curious as to that for our teachers. What's the answer on that? Do you know?
If they're, I, I, I'm pretty sure, I just say, I did this, this is career here, and I can say I got paid to be a coach, so I'd be a bus driver.
Biggest pay per trip.
No.
Oh, he's...
Over a hundred miles a day, yeah.
I would not necessarily be certain that I would be telling you the facts, but he had...
If I understand the question, you want to know if there was any additional pay for coaches that receive, have to earn their CDLs well?
Correct. Like if, they obviously drive a lot, or the band, or choir trips, or whatever, and I was just curious for our teachers and our coaches, do they also get any additional pay for these out-of-pocket expenses that they have?
They do receive pay for driving the bus. As far as when they come on board, I know that's one of the things that, I don't know if it's built in their job description, but it's a requirement that's out there that they do obtain it. Currently, the whole purpose behind setting up the additional pay that we have for drivers is to offset the cost, but that's because of the timeframe it took for them to get their CDL. A lot of times, they were not able to afford the, roughly the $150 that it took to obtain their CDL, so that's why that initially was put in place. They, at this time, as far as coaches, new hires coming on board, as far as I know, they're not receiving that sign-on bonus or whatever you'd like to call it.
They do get paid when they drive the bus on a trip.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you get paid additional time to do that.
Right, so they have $25 and $35.
Yeah, but not, not to get the CDL, no.
Okay.
Related issue, but not right on point for this, but I just wanted to, I appreciate the answer.
Thank you. I have a motion. Did I have a second?
Yes.
Very good, very good. Any other discussion, question? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much, Mr. Cox.
Thank you. I know this will be very much appreciated.
And I'd like to make a comment, too, before we move all this. Our Transportation Department has done a great job this year under tough circumstances. There's a lot of traffic on the roads, a lot of construction on the roads, and they've just done a great job. So this is, thank you for, for approving that item.
Our pleasure.
It's, we, we can't have school unless the kids get there, and so it is so very important anyway. Item six B, Dr. Stockton, financial report.
It's Mr. Rice, our Executive Director of Finance, to come and present the financials.
Good evening, Mr. Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. It's my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements for the district for the month of March. These statements will include the general fund, debt service, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. The first statement we'll look at is the balance sheet, and the balance sheet includes our assets, liabilities, and fund balances. Each month, we always like to look at our cash and investments. If we look into the general fund, we see that we have $500 cash on hand, bank deposits of $410,000. We have $126 million invested in external pools, $99.5 million with Capital One, and our long-term investments are right around $500 million. Property taxes, probably the last time we'll see this slide, because our property taxes are coming in, and they're tracking very well, right about 98%, so we feel very confident that we'll reach the 100%. So looking good there. Next statement is our income statement. The income statement shows our revenues, expenditures, and fund balances. Our revenues include local and intermediate sources, funds from the state, and federal programs. Looking at our local and intermediate sources, as you can tell in the general fund and debt service, the largest income generator is taxes. Child nutrition, it comes from food sales, and our self-funded insurance comes from premium contributions. You can also look at our expenditures at the functional level. First time y'all seen this slide this year, we were waiting to get a little bit of history behind us to do a projection of our fund balance. If you remember, when we did the budget, we were anticipating a $21 million surplus. Currently, that change is $14.7 million is what we're projecting if you look at the highlighted line. The difference between that and the projected amount is the funds that we're using for the Woodlands High School girls locker room. We're amending the budget for that.
Mr. Rice, can you go back for a sec?
Yes.
I have a question. I think I've raised this before. I don't mean to beat a dead horse here.
No, that's okay.
Child nutrition, what's the net, what's the net balance or net proceeds from child nutrition?
For, for revenues for the, for the program?
Revenue less expenditure. So it looks like about...
It looks like it's increasing about $1.3 million right now.
So that begs the question, are we charging too much for that?
The, and, and I'm not specific knowledge on what, what there's, we're requ, we're, we're charging what is required to be charged. We can't charge any less.
Okay, fair enough.
Is that, is that right?
I, I will also add that, that's, that surplus is used to purchase equipment and, and food purchases.
It's what brings a zero-sum balance, right?
Primarily, it's equipment.
If that's the minimum amount we get charged, then...
And is the fund sales also concessions and stuff like that? It's just, okay, I'm trying to, thank you. Just making sure.
Thank you, sir.
Self-funded insurance, for the year, we've had total revenues of $20.5 million, expenses of $20.7 million, so revenues under expenses of about $200,000. So we're coming back a little bit from where we started. Participation at our wellness centers, the Oak Ridge Center has had 3,376 patients this year, the Conroe Center, 1,272, averaging 664 months, so pretty good participation in our centers.
I thought that was strong considering we had a week of spring break in there as well.
Yes.
Rice, would you, would you mind, I mean, just, just, sometimes I don't think people understand why we're interested in how many times somebody goes to the doctor. Could you just give a real, two-sentence explanation why we're interested in that 664? How much it saves us?
Yeah, at the wellness center, and, and Mr. Cox might be able to help me a little bit here, at, at the wellness center, it, it saves our plan because we, we've got it at a lot less cost to the district because they are our centers. So those doctors and facilities are paid through our plan, so we do save on the bills.
As well as being a lower co-pay to the individual.
It is.
It's a lower co-pay, you're right.
The, the employee benefits by the low co-pay, and in addition, it provides a clinic that they can always get access to, which is not necessarily the case.
I mean, the hours are...
It is one of the most positive things we've done in the last decade.
I, and I just, I mean, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure. Sometimes we blow through that. What does that have to do with, you know, I mean, 664, we brag about how many times somebody went when we're trying to get the cost of medical down. Well, it is in effect doing that. So thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Very good, good point.
Our investments for the month, we ended February right at $400 million invested. At the end of March, we had $382 million invested. The WHAM of the pools and Capital One, which is our, our operating money, is one day. We're yielding right about 17 basis points. Our longer-term investments, the WHAM on those 718 days, we're earning a little over 80 basis points, almost 81.
Very nice.
The WHAM of our combined portfolio, when you add the two together, is 91 days, yielding almost 22 basis points. And our benchmark, which is the 90-day T-bill, is at four basis points.
Very good, sir.
Very nice, very good work.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Okay, I think that's everything. Before we adjourn, I just have one thing to share. It, I was fortunate to be nominated, actually, not Dr. Stockton, to serve on the Chamber Board, the Greater Conroe, Lake Conroe Chamber of Commerce, and in our board package this month at the Chamber, we were given a 2014 North Houston Educational Profile booklet that was put out by the Lone Star College System, okay? We think we're good, we know we're good, we'd like to think we're good, but when somebody else tells you you're good, that's confirmation, and, and I want to share the confirmation with you that I saw and tell you how much I appreciate it, and this is to the administration, to the staff, to anybody else who wants to listen. But the class of 2014, I'm very proud to say that in all the surrounding and peer group schools, our ACT and SAT scores are superior to every other school district in the region, okay? And so I commend you for that. It goes on to share any of our other attributes, such as our fast, our fantastic financial transparency, our, our efficiency with the ERG, our, our efficiency rating with the controller, but I, SAT and ACT scores prove our kids are, you know, that's one proof, one, one, one piece of data that says they're ready for college. And I, as a parent and a taxpayer, appreciate that and just wanted to commend all of you. I, I move we adjourn. Thank you again, Dr. Stockton. I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Just trying to get...
I hit the gavel.
I did the gavel.
There we go.